It's 7:02, so we're going to call this meeting to order. This is the Kensington Town Council meeting for January 10th. Start of my agenda is on the second page, hold on. Should be the moment of silence, sorry. Okay, is there anyone, anyone would like to lift up? Okay, not seeing any hands. All right, well, if we can just bow our heads for a moment, we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Um, we had a problem with the November meeting minutes. One of the council members did not receive them, so we just held it off to approve for on this month. So we're going to go ahead and start with the November 8th meeting minutes. Somebody wants to make a motion?
I move to approve the November 8th council meeting minutes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
I wouldn't else.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, and everybody approved. Okay, great. And then we had a special town council meeting on November 20th. If I can get a motion to approve.
I'll keep going. I'll make a motion to approve the special town council meeting from November.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Um, council, I know you received the December meeting minutes. I saw one, Nate had one small edit. And so I think we're ready to go, so if we can get a motion on the closed session for December 13th.
I move that we approve the minutes for the closed session that was held on December 13th, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Okay, and then for the public session on December 13th meeting minutes, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the public session meeting minutes from December 13th, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Great. All right, we'll move down to the mayor and town council. Number one, Anne, do you want to take that one?
Sure, we want to make certain that the public is aware of what occurred here in Kensington. Just before the holidays, we unfortunately saw that one of our local religious institutions was vandalized. The Star of David sign and Israel sign in front of Temple Emmanuel. And the town issued this statement strongly condemning what happened. We, you can read the statement that was prepared in the minutes. This was classified as a hate crime. And we would like to underscore and reiterate that we strongly condemn attacks on our local religious institutions, including antisemitic attacks that are meant to intimidate and alienate the Jewish members of our community during this time. And we'd like to remind the community of the importance of being alert, being aware, and reporting any incidents of bias or hate crimes to the authorities so that we can stop this behavior before it escalates.
And the now, the letter is also on our town website on the announcements page as well. All right, thank you, Anne, for pulling that together. And we got quite a few responses from our county council members in support of our, the letter that was written. Okay, let's move on down. Number two, the sign review board variance, Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Equality Builders, which is proposing to lease the property located at 10-800 Connecticut Avenue, which was previously Space Savers, has filed a variance with the Sign Review Board with Montgomery County for three separate variances. One is for a variance to place a sign on a non pedestrian entrance on the south side of the property facing Farragut Avenue. The second variance is to place a sign on the east side of the property, non pedestrian entrance facing Connecticut Avenue. And the third variance is the same area, the east side, for a variance to allow the sign allowance calculation to be greater than 200 square feet. Per the policy of the Montgomery County Sign Review Board, they will not listen to the variance until they have received comment from the town of Kensington. You received a staff memo with regards to the three variances. And we've also provided to the council and the public the proposed sign plan for the three variances within the public documents.
Not to put Alex on the spot, but is it possible to pull those up, or at least one of them? Do you have the agenda documents?
Yeah, I can do that. Give me one second.
Okay, I just think it's helpful, at least to get maybe the Connecticut Avenue view.
Just to clarify, this is not a variance by the town. We are just providing comment to the Sign Review Board, who's actually hearing the variance.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Okay, I think the biggest issue was the size. Correct?
So this would be the east side of the property facing Connecticut Avenue. There's actually two variances for this. One is to place a sign on a non pedestrian entryway. There's no entrance on this side of the building. And the second variance is to allow the sign allowance calculation to be greater than 200 square feet. Equality Builder Builders is proposing just short of 217 square feet.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
Have they expressed a willingness to go down to 200? Have they given any reason for why 217 instead of 200?
They did not provide that information when we spoke to them. I did speak with Mr. Water, with Roger Water Street, with the county Sign Review Board. Staff with the county did have the same concern of why the sign was being proposed at greater than 200 square feet. There was plenty of room on that side of the building to stay within the 200 square feet.
And I believe we did hear from a property owner across the street that was concerned about the size of the sign. I understand why, you know, they want one on Connecticut Avenue, just because you, the entrance is on Farragut. I mean, you don't see the entrance, because the entrance not on this side of Farragut. You have the one in the back, is there, does there a picture of the one in the back? Or actually, you enter the building? Maybe not.
Yeah, it's at the end, I think. All the way at the bottom.
Yeah. Does it actually have a sign? No? Maybe they're spending all their money on the north side and the east side of the building.
This might be because it's only for the variance requests.
Oh, okay.
Maybe they're going to put one there, but it's not listed here.
Okay. Okay. Um. I think it's too big. I mean, I don't really have a problem with having it on, on the, on the Connecticut side and the Farragut side, but I do have a problem with how large it is. That's my personal opinion.
I share that. I mean, we've, we've done this for other properties within the town where the, call it quote, "front of the building" is really the rear of the building, but that's what's along the roadway. And we've approved a sign at the rear of the building for location finding. It's just too large.
I mean, I don't think the sign needs to take more than four windows tops.
I'm in agreement with that, but I'm also, I mean, I agree with the staff recommendation to not be supportive of the Farragut entrance, because it's more for, it's more for advertising and less out of the hardship or necessity to have that second sign. Based on the logic that everybody who enters that building has to go by it on Connecticut, because you can't cross traffic to the south. You have to go up and do a U-turn or go north and go past it and do a U-turn where you'd see it. And then you'd see it again when you go south after making the U-turn. So I think it's not necessary, and it's really more for advertising purposes.
I agree with that. I mean, I guess they could get away if they did a directional sign. They could do something that wasn't lit, but had, you know, equality builders with an arrow pointing to where you need to go. If it was a directional sign, maybe we'd feel differently, but I don't think it would need to be lit just because you're not looking for it at night. Anybody else?
No, I agree with what's been said, and I also didn't see a compelling reason to support a variance beyond the 200 limit that is, that is in the, in the code.
Anybody in the audience have a, want to make a comment? I can't see them. I'm not seeing any hands. So Matt, it sounds like we don't support the variance.
Well, you're, you're supporting one variance, you're supporting the placement of the east side.
Yeah.
So what we're hearing, what we'll relate to Roger Water Street and the Sign Review Board is that we, we are not in favor of the variance on the south side of the property, placement of a sign. We think that that is advertising and not signage. The east sign, we are in favor of the placement of sign, but we are not in favor of the second variance on the east side, which would allow it to be greater than 200 square feet.
So just out of curiosity, would we support a directional sign if it was just smaller and in the ground, maybe not even attached to the building?
So it would count towards their sign allowance calculation? My guess is that they're going to try to maximize the east side sign at 200 square feet. So they would need another variance at another time before the Sign Review Board to put another sign. Directional signs are classified as addresses, arrows, nothing that could be advertising or perceived as.
So you could put entrance with an arrow?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So just to clarify, are we saying that the entire building is eligible for up to 200 square feet? And so that if, for example, they do have a, a sign over their customer entrance that's 20 square feet, that that would reduce the size of the Connecticut Avenue sign to 180 square feet?
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, they, I know, I know Alex mentioned, they have not provided any, any signage package or any proposal to us for where the customer entrance is located. That's something that Roger and DPS will figure out in the sign allowance calculation if there's any additional signage. But they would need to reduce the sign on the east side. So what we would just tell them is that we do not support anything greater than the sign allowance calculation for the property of 200 square feet.
Well, I, okay, so let me just propose a little bit of a middle ground there, because I don't really want to have to consider this next month or the month after. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to go 200 square feet on Connecticut Avenue, because I think, you know, people are driving fast up Connecticut. And I'm more than happy to have them realize they just drove by Quality Builder. I'm not sure I need it to count against something over the entrance. Because to my, in my view, those, if they, they didn't build this building. If they did, they probably would have put the customer entrance on Connecticut Avenue instead of on the backside of the store.
I don't know, that's where the parking is, though. Better.
Well, I'm saying if they built it, they might have put the parking.
I, I don't think this is a place where pedestrians, you know, go shopping. I think it's.
I'm just saying if they, if they need something over the doorway, I, you know.
Yeah, I mean, they have multiple options on the property. I mean, they could put a, they could put a monument sign, much smaller, 200 square feet. I mean, they're just maximizing and at this point requesting something that's greater than what's allowed. Space Savers, who was or is the current tenant, doesn't even have a sign on the east side of the property. And so they just have the address 10-800. So.
This sign doesn't have that.
Yeah, Darren and I applaud your working toward a middle ground. But I think it's just going to end up coming back to us. I think my preference would be just the signal that they keep, that they present a complete sign package to the county that adheres to a maximum of 200 square feet, however they want to put it on the building. On the, on the west and on the east, but then we don't support the south.
So we have, we, we would support a variance as to building face, but not as to sign square footage. Is that the gist?
I believe so. We're allowing it on the side that doesn't have the entrance.
On the east, but not the south.
Yes. Okay, right.
That's fine.
Okay, good.
Can I just ask one, since we're on the topic of this issue of signage on Connecticut Avenue? Was there an update, Matt, from the sign board for the other property, the Boycross Health?
The Concord Building?
Did they review that?
Yeah, so that's actually, yeah, the John Blick's property over on Concord will be on the agenda on January 17th.
Okay.
My understanding is that, I mean, they have our comments. They've accepted them. And I've been told to anticipate that the Sign Review Board will provide them the variance and allow the sign to be placed at 47 and a half feet. The original sign is being transferred from Farragut Avenue.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Number three, the tactical urbanization presentation. I know Nate, you've got some people from the working group on the call.
We do. We have Peter Kozgoff and Marla Hollander, and also Alan Simon, co-chairs on in support. But we're going to present, I'm just going to give you a brief kind of overview of where this idea came from and what work has been done over the last, I don't know, six months or so, actually. And then turn it over to, to Marla and Peter to be able to provide a walkthrough of the presentation. It shouldn't be more than about 10 minutes, but this concept of tactical, tactical urbanism is one of our four work streams of the pedestrian and bicycling access and safety working group. We have about three or four people who've been involved with this work stream, including those who are here tonight, as well as Earl Houston and John Rogers has been providing some feedback and advice. But basically, this work stream has been doing a lot of research on the topic. And I'll give you a quick preview of what the topic is in a moment. Having, you know, presentations within our working group. We've had a couple of discussion sessions. Tracy was at one of them for one of the meetings. And talking to other jurisdictions, doing the research to come up with this presentation. So a lot of work's gone into what will ultimately be recommended. What is tactical urbanism? Simply put, it's a way to marry these concepts of prioritizing pedestrian bicycling safety with our public arts program. Community engagement and outreach, exploring different options and experimenting before actually having to commit to a long-term permanent solution. So it's a really cool concept that, that was, that the recommendations you see in the end, and they'll go into more detail, but the recommendations that you see in the end were informed by, the sites were informed by our walkability, bikeability audit. So it's very evidence-based for where we chose to prioritize. And we recognize that some, some of these that are going to be proposed are more viable than others in terms of just logistics and who we had to, who we'd have to collaborate and coordinate with and outreach, et cetera. And also in terms of price for the pilots. But I think you, hopefully, will find this an interesting concept if you didn't know about it before. But it's, it's something that's taking off in a lot of places around the country. And I think we've got a, a really good case to be made for why we should be doing it here in our town. So with that, I'll turn over to, I forget who's going first, if it's Peter or Marla, but whoever wants to jump in. Laura's yours.
All right. Thanks for the introduction, Nate. So my name's Peter Kozgoff. Woodfield Road in Parkwood, so just outside of Kensington proper. I've been walking and biking to Kensington since I was 13 and still continue to do it to this day. I view this work stream as an opportunity to give back to the community as well as to improve the pedestrian and biking experience for those within the town of Kensington. Marla, want to introduce yourself real quick?
Yeah, thanks, Peter. Hi, everyone. My name's Marla Hollander. I live on Warner Street in the Kensington Estates neighborhood with my family, including two teens. My professional hat, I've been a healthy community design professional for the past couple of decades, working with communities across the country. And being able to serve on this work group is, is my, you know, love of my own community, really wanting to support the pedestrian lifestyle, the dream. One of the reasons we moved to this town. So really excited to, to be able to support the community in that way. I think you got a snippet of, of why we're bringing this concept of tactical urbanism, why the work stream and the work group is bringing it to, to you to share for consideration. Really kind of taking a couple moments to talk about what tactical, tactical urbanism is and isn't before we move on to some of the potential things that we can be doing in the town. So, you know, I want you to think about the images that you saw on the first slide and that you're going to be seeing throughout this presentation, because a picture is worth a thousand words, and I'm going to be sharing some words with, with everyone. But, you know, really thinking about tactical urbanism as an approach to neighborhood building. And it's being used across the country, actually across the globe, to really lift up ways to reimagine places, reclaim spaces, improve public safety, foster connection between residents and communities. We're seeing some, some work blossoming up in Rockville and Baltimore. DC has a very thriving commitment to public art and a kind of tactical urbanism frame as well. So we would not be the first to foray into this at all. It's, it's a, it's a technique that, that is really using short-term, low-cost, scalable interventions to catalyze long-term change that we start to see, that we've identified in some of the opportunities for pedestrian improvements, for us to test things out, to, you know, come up with some, some more permanent solutions. Three key cornerstones, you know, safety, tactical urbanism, increased visibility of pedestrians, bicycle paths, it alters driver behavior, reduces speed. A lot of the things that we've been talking about in our work group, reclaiming some spaces, bringing life to, to community through artwork and fostering community engagement and connection by bringing community into the process and, and just, you know, creating shared activities. We can move on. There's really some great, strong data behind tactical urbanism and street art. Some recent studies from Bloomberg are showing decreases in, in driver and pedestrian conflicts, 25%. 27% increases in drivers yielding to pedestrians where there are projects cited and 50% decreases in car crashes involving pedestrians and cyclists. So really, really strong data supporting this type of work. Next. And, and when we were exploring different pathways as a, as a work stream, as a work group, we really, you know, saw this natural connection between the incredible public art that we've been commissioning within town and, and kind of the vertical exploration of art with this, you know, more kind of horizontal plane of bringing art to a, to a different level, kind of meaning that the vertical and the, and the horizontal and continuing to support arts in the community. I'm going to turn it over to Peter to talk just a little bit about the tools and then just really dive into some potential sites that we've been thinking about.
Great, thanks, Marla. So I'm going to try and be quick, because I know that you guys got this package ahead of time, and I want to be respectful of your time, but please feel free to jump in and stop me if you have any questions. More than willing to engage on those. Tactical urbanism tools, you know, four key categories. Barriers, which prevent cars from encroaching on the reclaimed spaces. Landscape elements, which help enhance and provide something for users to interact with at these spaces. Signage, which provides information about these reclaimed spaces and the surface treatment, which enhance the experience and the visibility of the reclaimed spaces. So many of you guys may be thinking, have I ever seen tactical urbanism before? We've shown a few pictures before of tactical urbanism projects, but the reality is that a lot of those street reads that popped up during COVID, whether in Bethesda, we, Silver Spring, those are all examples of tactical urbanism, reclaiming public spaces for a reimagining of a community usage. So whether it's the chairs, the picnic tables, or astroturf, but shutting down streets or parts of streets so that a community can reengage and reimagine how they engage with their infrastructure.
Peter, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you think that was, I mean, obviously, that was done to get people outside, you know, because of the pandemic, but there was also so much, there was less traffic, which made it easier to close the streets. Although many have stayed closed, is that correct?
Some have stayed closed, that is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And adding to that throughout the country, even before COVID, there were efforts to take away parking spaces in lieu of, you know, a cafe corner or such, which were commonly seen during COVID. But we can jump to the next slide. Oh, sorry, we're at the safety objectives, my apologies. Yeah, so safety objectives. Here are the four key pillars for increasing safety for pedestrian bicycle experience. That includes reducing time in active roadways, slowing traffic, increasing visibility, and protection for pedestrian bicyclists. So tactical urbanism employs many tools and methodologies that address these concerns. These are also objectives that we use to evaluate the sites that we selected. Example, reducing time in active roadways by using bump outs to create a shorter crosswalk, slowing traffic with tighter turning radiuses, increasing visibility with reflective tape, and, you know, public art on crosswalks. So various strategies to employ to achieve these objectives. Move to the next slide. All right, so some background on our work stream itself. We identify initial sites from the walkability audit or consideration and then evaluating those to select a three finalists that we're briefing you all here today on, based on the ability of various tactical urbanism techniques and methodologies to address some of the shortfalls that were identified in that walkability audit. The key components from this overall work stream is addressing existing safety shortfalls, community engagement contribution, as well as an opportunity to add art to the community. All right, so jumping into site option one, and I want to be clear that each of these options is a little bit different. We have a little bit of different recommendations, as well as there's different problems being addressed. So it's kind of a diverse range of not only locations throughout town, but also tools and approaches. But site one is Calvert Place and Kensington Parkway. You can see that going southbound, Kensington Parkway, making that right turn onto Calvert Place. It's a very wide angle turn, this results in cars going speeding. Looking at the angle itself is very reminiscent of a highway where cars are not intended to slow down, and that seems to be what's happening here. So taking upon this opportunity to address it, looked at ways to use tactical urbanism, public art to slow it down. We are recommending the next slide. We are recommending the next slide, uh, using a public art installation to change and carve out some of that road and reclaim that. You can take a look at this example, and on the right side of the graphic there, you see the tree and the curb. This is originally a very wide angle turn and, uh, some of that has been carved out with this, uh, this street art. So it is close to a right angle, or you'll notice that it's still very easily traversable for motorists. But requires any drivers making that right turn to, uh, make it at a much slower pace. As well as you see the crosswalk itself is now, uh, much shorter on. So it's a shorter distance for pedestrians and bicyclists to engage in a, uh, active roadway. Now imagining what this looks like at our site, Calvert Place, sorry, we go to the next slide. And you see my, uh, very, uh, talented, uh, Microsoft Paint skills. The two blue, uh, indicators right there would be approximately where we'd, uh, recommend placing street art, um, obviously we do have residences along Calvert and Kensington Parkway. So these would need to be, uh, spaced appropriately so that, uh, residents can access the driveway. I wouldn't foresee any detrimental effects to, uh, towards these residents as they still be able to access their driveway. In fact, it would more function as a extended protected driveway than anything else. Um, but you can see that folks coming down Kensington Parkway, southbound could still make that right turn onto Calvert Place. They wouldn't be able to do it at a, uh, larger speed, they have to slow down for that. Same thing with Calvert Place, going, uh, making the left onto Kensington Parkway, northbound, still be able to make that, but it's more of a right turn. And, uh, you can see our, uh, broad overview of this, um, our estimate materials. Uh, estimate that this would only be out six months or so, we'd still want a traffic engineer to do a design review. Uh, community engagement obviously would be with, uh, Calvert Place residents along with Washington Street. Folks who'd be most likely making that right turn as well as just, uh, the general area of, uh, Kensington.
Hey Peter? Couple of que, that was my first question is, has any of this been socialized with the neighbors specifically that property where the, the driveway is in the middle of the installation?
No, this is, uh, this is just our, uh, scope and meeting right here. We've, uh, we've discussed this internally, the, uh, DBAS, the the subcommittee, but, um, yeah, we weren't gonna move forward until we got a green light in the council.
And then, and then, and then, and I really appreciate that you've already acknowledged that, you know, traffic engineering study, they having to look at these actual radii, my concern or question, I shouldn't say, because I, until we, you know, like, this is Microsoft Paint. And I think you did a wonderful job with it, but, you know, where would the flexi post go? I get it that it's an extended kind of protected driveway, it could make, honestly, getting in and out of that driving more precarious.
Right.
Um, just depending on how it's designed, that would be, um, cause I, yeah, so those are my comments, I think you know that, I think you're probably aware of that and it'll go through with engineering, but um, when this gets to more of a, call it a phase two, more refined artistic Microsoft Paint skill. Um, I'd be really curious because this, to me, looks almost problematic to get in and out of.
Right, so, uh, you know, obviously we're gonna be engaging with the community, but the folks living along the stretch that we will be putting public art, their input is gonna be paramount to this, uh, and, you know, there's an opportunity to have flex posts in various locations so that they could theoretically cut corners over the, uh, 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 public art. Still discourage folks from cutting through the public art area, but they could access their driveway, there's various options that we can look at, but yeah, that would, that's something that would get fleshed out with the engineering side.
And then, and I'm sure the engineers will do this anyways, but also for the radii for our town, uh, trucks and plows.
Right.
So. Thanks.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify here, this is all just to give you a, a visual of what we're talking about. This, this all would invariably be analyzed and looked at, like you're saying Connor, like Peter's responding to your your points, but this is just to give you a visual of the concept.
Yeah, and, and I think it's great, I, I remember looking at this with Bloomberg a couple of years ago. I also wonder, same location, and we may have had flexi posts there for a little while, but almost just doing a, a triangle wedge or pork chop off of the, the island property. And narrowing the road toward the homes on the west side of Calvert. If you get, get the sense of what I'm saying Nate?
Yep, I do.
Uh, I, I wonder if that, where it's all one contiguous piece, maybe more natural as well, as well as work to help with the problem we already have of illegal U-turns in that location.
Yeah, I mean, it does defeat a little bit the purpose of people speeding down Kensington Parkway and just taking that, you know, that hard right because they can, it's just like a s- s- a slow, a, a very smooth right. Um, if they're heading south, because that would, they would still be able to do that, but yeah, I mean, all of these, I think in the general scope of what you're saying is fair game, um, it's just this very specific site that was identified as problematic, yeah. But it's a really good point. Should we keep going?
Sure.
All right, okay.
So, uh, site two, uh, Frederick Ave, on the northern side of Frederick Ave. There is a sidewalk that ends abruptly at the first exit or the first entrance to the Kensington House Apartments. Uh, this is a considerable problem, um, when you realize that is the, uh, Kensington, or I'm sorry, Frederick Ave Local Park. Uh, just between, uh, an apartment building and Wake Drive with, uh, multiple families, children having to walk in the street. Uh, in order to get to that or using the southern sidewalk on Frederick Ave and then crossing without a crosswalk. So opportunity here is to increase pedestrian visibility and safety across a frequent travel route. Going to the next slide, we can see, uh, recommendation here is to use planters and other hard barriers. Create a safe, uh, walk and cycle route for, uh, users to connect to that, uh, park. And increase awareness as well as increase public art in, uh, Kensington and the, uh, town's greenery and streetscape. Uh, again, we have Microsoft Paint, um, started the show here, obviously not to scale, but this green boxes are about, you know, what we'd imagine doing with the uh, planters, just taking off a little bit of the shoulder so that there is a more protected, uh, path for folks to go down. Uh, now, you may notice that it stops right at that parking lot for the, uh, local park. There's, you know, opportunity to explore taking that down all the way to Wake Drive. You know, uh, still something of discussion. We also had a crosswalk connecting the, uh, sidewalk on the southern side of Frederick Ave, northern side. Well, also suggesting a bike rack at local parking lot. But the duration of this installment is a bit longer than previous one, six months, twelve, that being because the end of this route is at a playground. Or we would like to see media engagement that, that's through a, uh, more, uh, warmer months, just to get a general idea of what that interact would be like. Um, and similarly with the, uh, previous, and actually for all three of our site options, like a traffic engineer review as well. Um, engagement here will be, uh, heavily focused on, uh, folks living in the, uh, the apartment buildings as well as those, uh, along the Frederick Avenue corridor, both north and south.
Can I get clarity on the, on the planters, would they be next to the curb or you're, you're creating a sidewalk in the street?
That's correct, in the street.
Okay, you don't think, I mean, I, I've seen way too many stop signs, uh, lamp posts, things that are not actually in the street being knocked down by cars. Do you don't think that the planters would just be, um, you know, something that should could be hit and cause injury to somebody who may be in the street as they're walking by? I, I, I just, I have some concerns about the
That's a concern of mine. Yeah, I, I tend to, to not recommend, uh, dust flex posts, uh, they don't provide any, uh, you know, other than a little bit of visibility, they don't provide any hard safety. So the planters that we're looking at would be filled with, uh, um, nearly a thousand pounds of soil, something like that, um. So that would be a significant barrier impediment for any, uh, motorist or vehicle that would drift into these, uh, lanes. Um, would likely use, uh, reflective tape to try and increase visibility as well. I totally understand the, uh, the concern there, um. But, uh, you, with the engineering design review, that we can determine whether or not this would be suitable before going forward, so. This is, you know, take further analysis before, uh, you know, actually implementing, but no, I, I would not recommend anything that I wouldn't take as well as with that a, uh, more sturdy barrier, you know, and we could obviously be opening and pivoting, you know, from planters to uh, concrete barriers as well.
Uh, jersey barriers?
Yes, and those could easily be painted too, so adding to the, uh, art installation, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd almost rather see that as a jersey barriers that have paint on them, I think that would be kind of cool.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, so last site option, uh, kind of infamous, um, is the Knowles and Dietrich section, uh. I don't need to explain this too much, but there's been a lot of development at these already popular shopping centers in the past few years. We have, I believe, the apartment build coming in the north, uh, west quadrant over there. Um, as well as you have a few playgrounds, just a few blocks from this intersection, a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic that tries to cross here, across Knowles, um, as well as across Dietrich. Uh, and you only see one crosswalk here, uh. Also looking at the, the northeast corner, you can see on Dietrich coming from Knowles going westbound to Dietrich North, that's an incredibly wide angle turn so much that from the satellite, you can see how the all road itself is degraded with the speed and the weight of all those cars. So the opportunity here is to increase pedestrian visibility and safety across a very frequently traveled routes. Um, we go to the next slide, see what this would look like. We're proposing using, uh, bump outs and crosswalks, uh, with, uh, urban art to create a, uh, environment that pressures drivers to drive slower as well as increasing awareness of users of these, uh, intersections that are either walking so through more narrower roadways or road diet drivers, then, uh, pressure to drive slower as well as the sharper turning radiuses where some drivers want to be more aware of, uh, uh, their surroundings. And imagining what this would look like on the next slide, we have one more Microsoft Paint rendering and you see the giant cart on Dietrich Avenue. Still very much accessible and traversable by motorists. But, uh, you have a much, much shorter way for pedestrians to go, uh, in an active roadway, using bump outs on all the corners. There is, uh, again, an option to add, you see that there's only two additional crosswalks, there's an option to add a third one on the eastern side of Knowles, um, that would be considered as well. Uh, before anyone asks, yes, absolutely, Knowles is a state road, we're going to need SA coordination before anything really gets done here. I understand that, uh, the possibility of this actually getting enacted and going forward is still a little bit up in the air. I know that the state is looking at, uh, doing something here. That being said, tactical urbanism is about reimagining a way a community interacts with their infrastructure. And by enacting cheap and short-term, uh, solutions. So whether or not, uh, um, you know, the state's doing something in near term, this could certainly be a near-term solution that provides a safer alternative to what already exists for its bike and pedestrian users. As well as how the community ends up interacting with installation can help inform more long-term permanent solutions that would then be so either employed by the state or collaborating with the state. And, you know, our engagement here would obviously include not just the neighborhoods, but also the businesses at the shopping centers. All right, next step, so, uh, like to obviously respond at any action items. Addressing the questions so far, at this point, if there are any additional questions or anything we can't answer, we will certainly do that. But assuming that any of these projects get greenlit, uh, that would then lead us to a project, uh, planned development. Um, ultimately, at the end of those, uh, evaluation and removal. As I mentioned, that tactical urbanism is about a, uh, short-term, cheap and, uh, scalable, uh, but temporary. Way of reimagining and, uh, how a community interacts with their infrastructure to inform and, uh, imagine more long-term permanent safer solutions. So the evaluations could help determine prior recommendations for, you know, more long-term, uh, implementations for, uh, you know, other future projects elsewhere. So with that.
Yeah, so thanks Peter and thanks Marla, um, we're really, we really like to hear your reactions and, and questions, but just to be very clear. The request tonight is to, um, seek your approval for budgeting for this for next fiscal year to pilot some or all of these. So just, just to, just so you know what the ask is, I don't think we were very clear about that yet.
Um, well, I've got multiple questions, but, uh, council, do you all have any questions?
I have a opening question, just on whether, um, within the three options you have, um, ranked them in terms of feasibility. I'm assuming that the Dietrich one, because it involves the state highways, it's on the lower end, but, um, would be curious to hear you all address that.
Uh, we have not, at this point, uh, Dietrich, obviously, it would be between the other two options, or the, uh, Calvert and Kensington Parkway or the Frederick Ave. We haven't evaluated those, uh, you know, at this point.
Sure.
I have a couple of comments, um, I mean, I, I love the idea, the concept of combining art and pedestrian safety. Um, I also know that art can be, you know, political or, or socially active. And I would not want to see our streets used for a Black Lives Matter plaza, I wouldn't want to see it used for you know, Zionism or even a Republican elephant. Not an American flag, I mean, I, I just don't want to see it be political and, and I want to know sort of how do we keep it at a non-subversive or political a- a- aspect of art. Knowing how much art can waft over into subversive.
So, it's a really good point, if I could just say, this concept in the working group started off in a very broad sense of the term of what tactical urbanism is, and even discussions around like what do we, what was it called, guerrilla? What was it, Marlesk?
Urbanism, yeah.
And that, we are, we are presenting the most, um, I think the most structured type of activity where we would have a lot of say in which artists get selected, what the design is. And I fully agree that we would want this very controlled, um, and I think that is, is definitely the intention, I think that's how DC does their program. Uh, and so on, but it's a really good point and good to raise it, uh, but it, but it would be something that I think we would have to be approving of what, whatever gets designed as a, as a council.
And then the other, um, kind of question or, or comment, I guess, is, you know, I noticed each of the proposals considered a traffic engineer, uh, review. And I can understand how a traffic engineer can evaluate, you know, planters full of dirt versus, um, the, the, the flex posts, but I don't know how they would evaluate, you know, art painted on the ground. And I, it's like, I just don't want to, you know, eh, just go forward supporting it, think, thinking there would be a, you know, a wise eye, trained eye looking at this when there might be no criteria for a traffic engineer to use to evaluate.
Yeah, and I can say there's, there's guidance documents related to the art piece, um, that, that come into play as well. You want to make sure that you're using art that's not too detract, too distracting to drivers. Um, and so learning, that's part of the exploration, learning more about what, what those components are is gonna be very important because the, our first and foremost consideration is safety. Um, which is why, you know, why we would be doing this um, in the first place, is we want to in, in, increase, improve safety for pedestrians and bicyclists, so. Um, we're gonna be paying very close attention to figuring out how to make sure any of the art pieces would not detract from that.
Marla, I'm glad you brought that up because, uh, some of the pictures were like, whoa, that's, there's a lot going on there, I, it, it did look very distracting, so that was one of my, my notes, so I'm glad to hear you, hear you say that. I'm sorry Derek.
Yeah, and there is a whole guy that says, this is the kind of art that, that is, that, that works, this kind of art doesn't, right, so.
Okay, um, one of my questions was, um, we're, we're a little town, I know a lot of this urbanization is, I don't want to call it a quick fix, but it's a, it's a way of of fixing a problem short-term, maybe to see if it works or, or whatever, because these are supposedly temporary. Into town our size, why don't we just have a traffic engineer look at it? Into town our size, why don't we just have a traffic engineer look at it and then we just fix it? Why are we going through this step?
I can answer that. So we took the Calvert concept to Matt in a discussion when we have the walkability audit and the reaction, if I can summarize Matt, maybe just come in here, if, if I'm, if I'm mischaracterizing this, is that there would be a lot of pushback from residents on something like that. Because, um, for, for various reasons, I think we had said maybe a sidewalk there or something more permanent. Um, and I believe that this is a good step for areas that we don't know truly what the, what it will, but the reaction will be like fully to something. I think it gives people more comfort to be able to see it, to visualize it, to feel it, to experience it before making a long term commitment to something that may, you know, they, that, that may not be fully understandable until it's there, right? So I think that's, that's the spirit of it and we would want to design them, I believe, and I think this is how most of them are done. And we had timelines on there for six months or the six to 12 months for the installation. But I think we'd want to design them for the possibility of keeping them permanent if it's so decided. But it's really is about piloting and, and testing it and feeling, feeling it out before making a permanent decision. Is that, is that right, Matt? I mean, I don't know if I characterized our conversation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get off topic. Um, so I guess, eh, what we discussed about with at least on Calvert and Kensington Parkway was extending the sidewalk from Kent Street. And the issue that we're going to run into there is mostly with right of way. We don't have the right of way to do it. Um, you know, we, we don't get a lot of feedback about this intersection, at least not recently. In the past, historically, we received a lot of community feedback, mostly pertaining to, uh, illegal U-turns, which we seem to resolve with the signage. Um, we previously had issues with speed, uh, so we have installed, um, speed humps on this, this portion of Coward. And, you know, we've cleaned up the stop sign a little bit further once you reach Washington Street. Um, so I mean, I guess my only, my only comment would be staff wise on these is I, I think these, they need a little, they need vetted before we move forward. I mean, that would be my only position. Uh, I mean, I'm just looking at this. I know we're, we're doing paint and everything. Um, there's some traffic movements in there that cannot happen, um, at least with the Calvert. You know, I'm looking at that and saying, why don't we just pull the curb out, communicate with the three or four residents there, pull the curb out, increase the green space and potentially be able to plant some trees. Um, that would be just what we've done more recently in the town.
Yeah, over on St. Paul Street, we did that.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna discuss Knowles because we all know the issues of state highway administration. But at least with the Frederick Avenue one, uh, I had mentioned the tracing, I've mentioned the Connor. Um, you know, we have more than enough right of way for that location. Uh, this is not something that has come to staff before. Um, you know, my preference would be to extend the sidewalk to Wake. Uh, I, it wouldn't cost that much more than what the proposal was in, in the diagram. Um, I would just like to vet this a little more, maybe talk with the working group, kind of figure out some solutions. Um, and kind of go from there.
Well, I, and I don't know whether you want to get mobility and traffic committee, uh, they're, run it by them.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my preference is to kind of push that back down to the MTC to vet it a little more and then we can bring in Joe. Joe's our traffic engineer to kind of figure out more long term solutions. This is a council decision. Obviously, staff likes to solve problems, uh, long term. Um, I, you know, I, I'm always concerned about short term things. We run into a farragut avenue where we have flex posts for years. Um, when there was a very simple fix that didn't cost that much money to the town, so.
So I, I, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't, since we're not in budget season yet. And, and since the, the primary ask tonight seems to be general support for this concept. As long as it's not tied to specific locations. I, I don't, I wouldn't mind, you know, supporting the concept of, of having, you know, we al- we already have like an art budget that we use for murals. I would not mind, you know, adding this concept to it so that you know, it's probably already eligible for it, but, um, you know, adding it as something that we can consider. But, but Matt, I, 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 I tend to agree with, and what both you and Tracy have said, if there's a problem, let's fix it. Let's, let's not try to do a cheap solution that, that, you know, um, uses paint to solve it. Um, but there might be opportunities in town where this concept would be, you know, attractive.
I, I love the idea of the crosswalks of adding the, the art between the, the white blocks. I think that's a great idea. I love that.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment is I've seen it in the Bloomberg program. I mean, my first is I, I applaud you guys because what you're doing is bringing attention to, to pedestrian and bicycle safety and you know, looking at the three options you brought forward, the first thing to Matt's point is the farragut one, I would not be supportive of because I think we just need to extend the, the actual permanent sidewalk. I think what you guys have, have helped to demonstrate is instead of just doing something in the roadway, I was just looking at, at
Just for clarity, Connor, you said.
Sorry, for Frederick. Yeah, I'm a North Sider. Um, on Frederick, um, leading to that park and all the way out to Wake, I think it makes just logical sense to go in and put a permanent sidewalk. And I think it goes to the whole idea that the county has a park there. But they haven't provided a safe way for people to get to the park. And so we can help address that. Um, I'm with Darren. I, I really am very favorable of just putting together a line item when budget season comes for this. I don't know that, you know, these three may not be my top issues, but I do think the crosswalks are ones to bring a lot more, uh, visibility to some very specific high pedestrian areas. I'm thinking about the one that goes from, you know, across Howard from M and T to the farmer's market. I know it's raised and what, but we can use the art there to really help visually identify for people that this is a large pedestrian, um, you know, in- intensive area. Um, and so.
I think that one has the bricks, but.
It does, but at some point where those are going to get damaged, right? Um, and it, it may be that this might be another way to add art, but art that has a visually a way to bring people's attention that helps to slow them down along with Darren's sign. Um, but at this point, yeah, I, I'm very supportive of putting money in the budget. Um, I do think each of these three areas could use some reexamining, but I think the biggest thing that's highlighted is there are some things that we can just go and fix. And you've pointed that out, so let's make a plan to try and address those.
Yeah, I think, uh, maybe if we want to try art within an existing sidewalk, which I think would be, I mean, this is council decision, a, a very good start for us. The intersection of Metropolitan and St. Paul. Uh, we have the, it's a four way, it's an always stop. Um, there are continental crosswalks at all legs, so there's four legs you're dealing with. It's not bricked in, although it's a state road, I think they would be supportive because we're not really changing anything. There's no structural change there. What we would be doing is enhancing an existing sidewalk. And I think that'd be a really good trial. Uh, it's not a residential area, it's commercial. So you might not have the pushback from residents as you would maybe, you know, in, you know, somewhere else in the location of the town. But that might be a really good opportunity to try this out. Um, you know, very soon, as opposed to six or 12 months out from now, so.
I haven't, I, I like Matt's idea, um, and I have another option to put on the table, um, building off of Connor's comments for uh, the team to look at. Um, the, uh, stop signs where Montgomery and Howard all come together in front of the dental building. I've been asked before if there's a way that we could sort of alert cars to slow down as they enter, as you said, pedestrian intensive area, particularly on Saturdays, farmer's market. I see routinely that drivers run that stop sign. Um, and it is one of our most heavily traversed, um, pedestrian intersections. And it feels like it has a bit of that gateway feel into, um, Antique Row, and it might lend itself well to better marked crosswalks and art, um, and that space. Um, but overall, I also want to just say that, um, I'm really grateful, um, to the team for exploring this, bringing it to our attention, also, um, sha- sharing the data, which was very compelling. Um, and for all the reasons you've stated, it seems, uh, like a good fit for our town. So I would also support, um, you know, putting space for this concept development in our budget for next year.
Any other comments from the council? Are there any comments from the people in the, um, in the audience?
I know Tom Brought had a, raised his hand in the chat.
No, I don't see Tom on my, I see the T.
There's a mess.
Oh, there he is.
All right, go ahead, Tom. Just a quick thank you to everybody. I was unaware that this committee was out there and doing it and, uh, just wanted to thank everybody involved in tonight's hearing. Uh, this is quite lovely. It's quite wonderful. Um, and I hope some things get done. Uh, Kensington is so cool. It's got such a great sense of style and the old, you know, French Quarter or the history of it. And I, I think, uh, I just wanted to voice my support. I hope the council will put a little money to what gets done. And I, um, um, like, you know, uh, obviously have an affected property. It has no bearing on that. We're here to help. Um, I can think of five other locations where this could be really cool and helpful. And I just wanted to underscore the temporary nature of it. Um, uh, often, uh, we get bogged down in engineering. Um, and, uh, don't lose sight of being able to take any action in a month versus something never getting done for three months. So I wanted to work 10 years. Um, which often happens in right away battles and wanted to echo and support Matt on, on his comments. So, um, anyway, I just think it's really, really lovely and I hope it gets done.
Thank you, John. Okay, uh, Joe?
Yeah, I, um, I really think that consultation with the neighbors uh, of any, of all of these projects would be really a wise thing to do as an, as an early next step, uh. I think there'd be some surprises that, that people might have about, uh, the, the ideas or the designs or the potential um, plans there. And also I just want to call attention to the Frederick Avenue, uh, location. That, that is pretty much all uphill um, to the stop sign at Wake and that, uh, that left turn, that prohibition on the left turns at time of day, uh, prohibitions at Wake, uh, that prohibition is routinely ignored both morning and evening. And, uh, so if there's a way that we could um, structure things so that, that, uh, that no left turn prohibition is, is more respected. That might be a, a good addition to these, uh, to these tentative plans, but, uh, uh, I think consultation with the neighbors is, is really, really essential.
Thank you, Joe. I, I agree with you, uh, on the, definitely the consultation with the neighbors. Even a pilot program can, um, freak people out. Sometimes they, um, so I've lived here long enough to know that that can happen. So that's very, very important to bring them into the conversation before anything is done. Okay. Um, anyone else? Okay, sounds like what I'm hearing, uh, from the council is that, uh, while we're not necessarily going to, um, pick something tonight, we are, would look to be adding more funding into the community arts program that would, would could, um, would also include something like this. And, uh, but I think the main thing would maybe to get some more input from residents, input from, uh, maybe our, um, traffic engineer and get some ideas to see what is feasible, um, you know, before we, you know, go too far into, um, uh, letting people know that we plan to, to do this. And, uh, so I think that's something, uh, ne- or, um, Matt, do you want to, when would, when would you want to bring like Joe into something like this? Joe Cuthro.
Um, from the beginning.
Okay, good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, what we can do is just plan to add some, I mean, I, I just, does anyone know from the working group what you know, just doing basic art within an existing um, crosswalk, if there's estimates for an artist for that? You know, are we, are we looking at $5,000 or?
I would suspect it's something like that. Yeah, I, I mean, we, for, for an entire intersection, correct me if I'm wrong, everybody who was part of the, um, for, was that the presentation, the word stream? I think for doing an entire, uh, intersection, it, in DC, it's 15 to $20,000 for the whole intersection. Doing one crosswalk, I would imagine is probably akin to the cost of option one, where you're adding public art in Calvert, on Calvert, which was about five to 7,000, I think. I, I, and there may be economies of scale if we do a couple at a time, I don't know. Um, but is that, does that sound about right, Peter and Marla?
Yeah, I think there's also the option, there's bringing in an artist, right? And then if we want to broaden it out to a bigger community engagement like SSL hours or, you know, bringing students in to have them do some of the labor of the paint under the artist, that's another way to possibly reduce time of the artist and cost as well.
And not only reducing costs, but also increasing buying of the community, if they're able to contribute to the artistic design and the, uh, the painting. You know, whether it be, you know, on the, uh, the street or whether we do the Jersey barriers and the community gets to paint a few of those. So it's another option.
You guys happen to know, there, I mean, I, I know that traffic engineers, their bible is this, um, manual and uniform traffic control measures, I think. Um, it's, that's what they're going to look at when, when we're proposing to take two white bars that were a crosswalk and add paisley artwork to the middle of it. Do, do you know if it says anything about that or DOT has issued any sort of guidance that says, oh yeah, go ahead and do that?
Not off the top of my head. Someone we can check on.
Yep, that's the first thing we'll hear back from Joe Cuthro. This, I've offered it, I just want to do it in a way that doesn't
Look.
sort of deviate from.
Yeah, and we, we take a look at, um, DC has a very, um, robust art program and John is, is on our work group. Um, so we can take a look and see what guidance they specifically have for crosswalks. Um, as an example.
That's great.
Yes, that's exactly what I was gonna say. I was gonna, I was gonna make the point that I think there's a, there's a need to marry both of these ideas here between needing traffic analysis and engineering to Tom, um, Tom's point around some things we can just probably move forward with. Others have done it, larger jurisdictions, DC's doing it all the time. And they have a design guide and that's what Marla is referring to, where John Rogers, who's on our working group. I, I believe he runs this program in DC. So we have a resource where we can do that. And they work with traffic engineers and there's, you know, there's definitely involvement, but I believe there's a way that we can kind of bridge both of those goals and doing something that's temporary and quick with also doing it in a sound way from an engineering perspective. I was gonna say.
Go ahead, Nate. Sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna say that I really appreciate, because I think, I, I wanted to conclude by saying, I really appreciate all the feedback. I think it's been excellent and to hear the views of the council and, 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 and you've Mayor Furman and, and the public. Absolutely, this would be, this is not just meant to consultative show. It's meant to be, um, participatory and engaging the public and really community building. So it's not just about making sure, you know, this house or that house or this street's okay with what's being proposed. It's about co-design of a concept and idea. So that might add a little bit of time to the process, but I would hate that the process is slowed down only because we need to do a detailed engineering design and we're not comfortable because we're, we're not, you know, this doesn't fall in the source book that, that Joe would typically use. But overall, the goal is to educate you all about the concept. Say that it's, we think it has potential and hopefully get some, um, agreement to budget for it, which I think is, is what's being uh, agreed upon. And absolutely, some of these decisions are not, are not going, if some of the options likely won't go forward. You've all made really good points, but the, the ideas are there. And I think great if we can, we can. great if we can, we can put forward some of the hard solutions or some of the permanent solutions on some of the options that we even presented tonight. But in the future, this always, this, this is a good option in our back pocket if we're getting mixed feedback and not sure whether something to move forward with more permanently or not. So it's always good to have as an option. In addition to moving forward really quickly with some of the crosswalks that we just discussed, um, like the St. Paul one or the Metropolitan Avenue one. So again, thanks. Great feedback. Really, really appreciate it. And we'll um, you know, I guess we'll work with Matt and, and, and you all to to think about how to move forward with some of the, some of this in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't see any problem with the crosswalks for sure. But I think where Joe would come in would be how far out would you bring the artwork? You know, like at Calvert and that sort of thing, you know, does it need to be ten feet or five feet or, you know? You know, what is the safety radius and all that sort of thing. But I, I definitely think crosswalks are, are something that we could um, could do. And you know, even if Joe may not like them, I think that's not something that, but we, we don't listen to him about speed humps either as regarding where we put them. So we've uh, definitely not always gone by the book on those, just the hype. Um, so uh, you know, if a street needs another speed hump, we'll give them a speed hump. So I think that's um, so, but I, I, I think there's good opportunities here. Um, and uh, I think just by, you know, adding some funding into that uh, community art budget as well as um, you know, looking at starting something small and then maybe um, going building from there. Great. All right. Well, thank you all. Appreciate you coming out this evening.
If I can make one last plug on the north side, as the development of the Huggins property goes forward, that Concord Pliers Mill Metropolitan Mixing Bowl would be another place where we've got a lot of crosswalks and, and pedestrian movements that this could be a really visible way to help try and tame that intersection.
Well noted. We will raise that point to SHA when we meet with them next. I like that. Thank you.
Good. All right. Thank you all. All right. Move along.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll go through the uh, committee uh, reports. I mean, not, excuse me, not the committee reports, the council reports. So um, Connor, you wanna start?
Um, I was gonna say, I don't have much. Um, although we do have an opportunity that was supposed to be yesterday, but due to the weather. Um, the Historic Preservation Committee is doing a um, a learning event. They've done it the last couple of uh, years. Uh, Town Resident Helen Wilkes will moderate and be talking with the uh, County Director for Historic Preservation, Rebecca Balo, and some of her staff on historic area work permits, the process, what's eligible, how do you get tax credits? What is that process all like? Um, I will say personally, I had attended the very, my first one prior to doing work on our home, which qualifies um, as historic. And it was really, really informative. It really kind of demystified the process. It also allows you to meet the people who will actually review uh, your historic area work permits. If you live in a historic home, uh, either Montgomery County or a or a uh, town of Kensington designated historic property. And so that is, I'm looking, I believe the twenty-third is the new date.
That's the new date. And Connor, I am gonna correct you because it's not necessarily a historic home. If you are in the historic district, you have to follow the rules of permitting as well as you can get the tax credits. You do not have to be a historic home. You just have to be in the historic district. And of course, they will treat you a little bit differently. If you're a, you know, a mid-century modern home, you can do things that maybe Connor can't do. But you will still be able to get the tax credits.
That was going to be yesterday and now it is uh, the twenty-third. And it's at Kensington Town Hall in person. They are gonna have a link um, for virtual. It's been out on the um, the town's list serve for several days. Uh, Matt, do you know if it's up on our town website?
It is.
Perfect. Um, so refreshments at six thirty PM and the panel discussion will begin at seven PM.
Yeah, and it should be on the lower level in the classroom.
All right, that's all I have.
Great. Okay, um, Anne, you wanna go next?
Sure, thank you. Um, I wanted to share and Nate, I'm gonna invite you to join me and this council update. Um, that Nate and I and advancing sustainable Kensington work have been in conversation um, with Kate Stewart's um, staff, Paul Ellis. One of the issues that um, we've been discussing with him are the concerns about the potential um, budget cuts to Wamata and, and transportation and how those could impact Kensington area. Um, so the L eight bus that runs north to south was, I believe slated for elimination or, or drastic reduction. There'll be impacts for ride-on buses that also serve our constituents. Um, and we'd like to explore um, putting together a letter um, to support um, the, the budget needs to keep transportation service um, to the Kensington area. But then that also um, raised up um, the idea that we'd had earlier of putting in a letter sort of proactively to the county about um, the town's budget priorities as the county is formulating its budget. And so this seems like a good opportunity for us to proactively start to put together um, our thoughts. And that's something we like to collaborate on. Nate, you wanna add to that?
No, just, uh, I'm not sure if we, I don't, in my time on council, I don't recall us doing this formally and sending a letter to the county exec and/or the county council. We've always just kind of done it, I think, word of mouth and talking with the officials. Would there be value in sending a letter where we wanna make sure that things do not get cut or are prioritized such as what Anne was mentioning with some of the transportation, potential transportation cuts, but then also um, things around like the noise library funding, Summit Avenue extend, extension and, and others. And, and I think Anne and I don't wanna volunteer her for this with me, but I think we'd be willing to have, help draft that letter if it helps.
That's right, we would. I would.
You guys okay with this?
I mean, we can get, we can pull together a draft um, to share. I know um, I believe the county executive usually introduces the budget in March, so it's under development now. So it seems like a good time to prepare um, a letter to that effect.
All right, um, sounds like the council will support um, the letter. So just send the draft out and we'll be good.
Would we want the letter to proactively raise support for Summit Avenue extension or wait until we see what the budget says about that?
Well, in fact, my opinion is it's better to be on offense than defense. Cause it feels like we're always trying to get it back in.
Okay, I mean, to the extent we presented, which we've done as not simply a road infrastructure, but a, you know, opportunity for revitalization and housing in that quadrant. Um, I, I think that, that it would be good to include it.
Nate, when will we have the final tap report? When will we?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I think we'll probably have it. Um, I mean, we should have had it before the end of the year, right? But I think that we'll have it before we would send that letter. We could put a link to it and say, you know, this is what we're thinking too. Or this is one, this is, yeah, we have evolved, or we're, we're continuing to advance on how we conceptualize this project.
I, I think that would be a good idea to include that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd be highly supportive. I mean, as soon as we have uh, the, the, the tap report, Nate, to your comment, I would very much like to go on the offensive of reaching out to as many, but the, you know, the strategic six or so council members about what Summit Avenue really is and how we've worked with ULI to conceptualize something that is not a roads project. It is the future of any sort of economic and, and real property redevelopment in that northwest part of our town. It creates parks, it creates connectivity, it will create additional housing, it will create the uh, opportunity for additional jobs that the experts have told us cannot and will not happen unless Summit Avenue is built because of how the road designs work currently. That it's just, these properties are, they won't get unlocked unless there's a way to get to them from north, southeast and west.
And maybe we'd be so bold to ask them to advance the project.
I mean, I have no problem being bold.
Yeah, why not?
All right, well, I think we can include that in the context of the broader priorities letter, right Anne? Or I don't know if you think it's to be two different letters. Okay.
Anything else? Okay, Darren?
I'll just be brief, cause that sounds a little bit like a broken record. We are still trying, we were going to have a traffic committee meeting, traffic mobile and traffic committee meeting in January, but we're pushing it to February so we can make sure that we got input on a couple of projects that we're, we're gonna consider.
Okay, great. Connor?
I went first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think I'm the last one.
I, I, Nate, sorry. I got confused with the going with Nate and Anne at the same time.
No, it's all right. Um, just two very quick, well, one updating, one, one request. Um, the P VAS working group is gonna meet on, we're down here, January sixteenth for our next meeting. And then the Sustainable Kensington is meeting on the twenty-second of January. So in reflecting on the other point is reflecting on the last meeting, I was thinking, you know, we had a request from the resident Joe to move the public appearances up in the agenda. And I think we should give it a try. I, I don't know why we wouldn't just pilot it, speaking of pilots for February and just move it above the resolutions, ordinances and um, regulations. Just suggesting that we give it a try, since it was a specific request from a resident.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Not for me. No, I'm done.
Okay, um, I've just got a couple of things. Uh, just wanna remind the council that uh, the journal deadline is on Friday. Um, if you need Monday, we can, I'm sure we could stretch that. This will be a late January, February issue. So if you've got things going on, please um, you know, get that to Carrie Ann, Carrie Ann um, by Friday or Monday. Um, also, I got the go-ahead from Neil Burka to announce that Moby Dick kebabs has signed a lease at the Kensington Shopping Center in the old tumbleweed. Um, does not take over the cleaners, just the tumbleweed where tumbleweed was. Um, this will take a while. They're gonna have to build out a kitchen. So, and we're working with them on a grease trap in the back. Uh, an MOU, um, because part of it may be in a right-of-way, but uh, which is used as a parking space. Um, so we're, we're working on that right now with them or will be shortly. Okay, um, also, speaking of tumbleweed, I just wanna announce that if you hadn't heard that Amy Johnson, uh, the tumbleweed owner who moved down to West Howard, she is completely closing her business, which is very sad. Uh, Amy was also the um, president of the Kensington Ken Business, Business um, Association. So we are going to miss Amy very much. She was a very active a member of our business community. And I know she's helped out at multiple events. And so she will be missed. Uh, she's not going anywhere, but I mean, she'll be in, um, she lives in Rockville, so uh, but uh, she was a very active member of our business community. And I hope if you get a chance, um, this is her last weekend. She'll be down at her warehouse getting that cleared out. And she's graciously providing us with some town of Kensington items that we can use for our welcome basket for uh, for new residents. So very grateful for her for making that donation. Um, also, I wanna remind the council that January eighteenth is the chapter meeting with um, Chief Jones, Marcus Jones. If you're available, it is by Zoom. And I believe the meeting starts at six o'clock. So if you can make that, um, let's see. Oh, and lastly, I just wanna thank the Kensington Historical Society. If you haven't received a calendar. Um, they did a beautiful job this year with the calendar. It's full color all the way through. And they um, most of the pictures were provided by the town from a professional photographer who came through the town about two years ago. And it really is one that um, is a keeper. Uh, it's uh, it's really uh, quite, uh, I, I actually bought two extra ones to send to my, my kids who grew up in the town and haven't been here for a visit in a while, so they could see how pretty, pretty the town looks. So I'm really excited about it. So anyway, hopefully they'll keep full color going forward, cause it, it really makes a difference when you have it up on your wall. Um, we do need to discuss um, the February meeting, but we'll do that after um, public appearances. Okay, all right, um, let's move on to the town manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, the town received a request um, from Montgomery Parks with regards to Kensington Cabin Park. Uh, they are looking to relocate the main access point into the park from um, this, if just south of the park, so the ten thousand block of Kensington Parkway. Uh, there is a mid-block crosswalk there that then goes over a bridge that goes over the creek. Uh, they're having some flooding issues down there. And they'd like to remove that access point. And in coordination with our bridge repair project, they have requested our engineer to design a plan to move the access point to the intersection of um, Kensington Parkway and Frederick Avenue. So we have passed that over um, to the engineer Brutus and Associates to put together a proposal and a design concept from Montgomery Parks to review. Uh, and I also just wanted to provide a quick update to the council on the bridge repair project. The project manager that was assigned to us from Brutus um, uh, took a position with another company. Um, so we lost our project manager, so we are behind in schedule. Uh, we have a new project manager. Uh, I met with him today. Um, so we're about two to three months behind schedule um, on that. And then, you know, whatever it takes for the proposed bridge uh, access point relocation, but we're hoping to get an RFP out for construction now um, late spring as opposed to right about now. So if there's any questions.
Yep, hey, Matt.
Yeah.
The proposed relocation of this pedestrian bridge. Would it be at the south part of the intersection with Frederick or the north?
It would be on the north end. It would be on the north end of the intersection. It would actually be a little slightly further up than the north side. Um, Parks is looking to do some they're having some flooding on the baseline there. So they're looking to put in some kind of covert to get the water. And then it, it looks like, at least on the concept plan that they provided us, that they wanna move the bridge to that location. We would probably have to extend into the road a little bit. Um, to create a green space to get the grade for ADA compliance into the park. Um, like I said, they've only sent us a very basic concept plan right now. We've sent it over to Brutus to take a look at. There's some questions on Brutus's end. Uh, they'll be reaching out to Montgomery Parks to clarify those questions. Um, but it looks like it is feasible. Um, we just need to figure out a little bit of grading. Um, and it would just bring the main access point into Kensington Cabin Park further in up north on the street into the town and would create a safer uh, crossing area, cause it would be at a controlled stop as opposed to a mid-block cross. So.
And then my last question, which I know so the county acknowledges they're having flooding problems, but they don't want to discuss the possibility of some sort of underwater bio-retention system at the, at that park.
Correct. So um, our hydro engineer with Brutus, um, he is reviewing their proposal with regards to what Parks has asked with regards to the flap gate. Uh, we are working on that study. The resolution this evening, which is the second part, which is the surveying of the storm drains is, is a part of that. So once we have that surveyed on the storm drains, Arun and the team over at Brutus will be able to put together the final plan, make recommendations. As, as the council knows, um, there is some pushback from Parks to put together either a stormwater pond or a containment system or anything that would disrupt the existing park area. Our hydro engineer is working on a, a plan. I anticipate that he'll be pushing back on that. You know, and it might involve some political muscle later down the road, but we're not there right now. So.
Matt, so that's, thanks for the update. That's actually one of the intersections that we have identified as troublesome in the walkability audit. So maybe that's an opportunity for one of these tactical urbanism crosswalks also when it gets redesigned, just to flag that. But and thanks for the update too on the, on the stormwater for Connor for raising that question. I'm glad that our hydro engineer will, will push back on that.
Yeah, we're, we're not, you know, there's some concerns on our end as, as, as the council knows that we've kind of relayed. And Brutus is going to put together the recommendations, and I, I do anticipate that we push back on what Parks is limiting us of potential resolutions to the flooding problems. So.
And, and I, you know, I know I'm being a broken record, and I know I feel like I'm stating the obvious, but between private donations and park funds, they just did a, a multimillion dollar restoration to the cabin. They have the surface basketball court there, like the flooding that would occur in a major storm event are putting both of those facilities at risk, which could be mitigated by, you know, what we've suggested to them, that they have this huge field that some sort of bio retention could, you know, help to prevent a flood event from destroying those, those two park assets.
Yeah, and, and what, what is being proposed on the parks, and we are very concerned that is actually going to cause a secondary problem. Where it may solve, might solve, you know, the, the flap gate issue, we are concerned that the ten thousand block of Kensington Parkway will experience flooding where they haven't previously. We already know that a couple of those properties are in the county floodplain. We've a long way to go with this, you know, each, each survey, each assessment is part of the puzzle. And, and we'll get there to get some results. So.
The council on that topic? Okay, anybody in the audience have a question about number or A? In Matt's update? Okay, Joe?
Yes, thank you. If I'm not mistaken, moving that crosswalk on Kensington Parkway to the north a little bit has been discussed by council in years past. This may be three to five years, and I think it was found not to be a feasible solution to move it up towards the toward the intersection with Frederick Avenue. And Matt, I think you were assistant town manager at the time, but I do recall that there was some discussion that county wanted that moved, that crosswalk moved and found not to be, found not to be feasible. With that in mind, then why would it be feasible now to move it somewhat to the north toward that intersection?
Joe, you're right. So our, the town's position was always to move the crosswalk. We were opposed to the mid-block crossing. We wanted to move it many years ago up to the north leg of the intersection. We received some resistance from parks at the time. There were issues with regarding the grading. I'm not sure what's changed other than they've experienced flooding where they don't want it. I think, and they've identified that moving the bridge and the location of the access point to the north would be beneficial to them. I mean, I, all I can tell you is that, you know, they proposed the idea. I'm in favor of it. And it's something that, that I think is very feasible, at least on the con, basic concept plan they've sent us. So I'm happy with what, with the direction we're heading with this.
I'm just wondering if it, if it was a no-go five years ago, why would it be suddenly a, a go now if the location is essentially the same?
Parks accepting the location and the grading issues.
Well, that and change of leadership and people that just in those positions.
I think there was a problem with grading too, and, and where they wanted to move this crosswalk was closer to one of the bridges and to cross the, cross Kensington Parkway and then go down into the park was, was just a pretty, fairly steep walk there. I remember correctly that it, it founded on those kinds of issues. It just was not terribly accessible. And and it was complicated by the bridges down there. There's three of them, I think, you know, roughly in the same area. So. Matt, did I hear you say a reference to, to one of the bridges or, as I say, I think there are three down there that, that.
There's three bridges that are, yeah, there's three bridges under the RFP that Brutus is working on for the repairs. There's the Kensington Cabin Park Bridge, which is located at Kensington Parkway and Frederick Avenue. There's the Kent Street Bridge, which is located between two Kensington Parkways, Kensington Parkway and the Kensington Parkway Access Road. And then there's a covert bridge, which is located on Frederick Avenue, just west of Kensington House. So those are the three bridges that they're working on to put together the, the repair project. And like I said, we hope to have that RFP out late spring at this point, and then we'll have a, a construction contract, and we'll move forward with the, the repairs, which for the most part are just related to safety. Railings, increasing the height of the parapet, bringing it up to code, changing the railings out. You know, there's no, there's some structural deficiencies. There's no structural issues with the one bridge at Kensington Cabin Park. But that's the only thing that's directly related to structural. Everything else is just bringing up the code with regards to parapets for the most part and railings. So there's safety, safety repairs for the most part.
Yeah, some of the railings are, are down or even missing, I think, on one of those bridges. Are they talking about doing all three at the same time, or is it going to be sequential, one after the other?
The contract for construction will be for all three bridges. They'll probably phase them. Depending on what needs to, what needs to be done. Obviously, the most work will be at Kensington Cabin, especially if we, we move the crosswalk. That will have the most significant work. So.
And have you, have you spoken with the neighbors there along Kensington Parkway or even on Frederick Avenue about, about the potential of moving that crosswalk?
No, we just got the request within the last week from Parks. So this, we have a concept plan. We sent it over to the engineer Brutus. They're going to see if they can make this work, and then we'll, we'll notify community. So.
Yeah, dialing in the neighbors, I think would be be a really good idea. Thanks.
Okay. B?
Sure. Mayor, council and I have discussed. There's a lot of infrastructure, I guess, I'll make this simple. There's a lot of infrastructure projects going on in the town. Some of them are large scale with regards to mitigating floods. Some of them are related to as acquiring property for a future public works facility. A lot of different types of CIP projects that are kind of something, some that we have spoken about publicly, some that we have spoken about closed session, some that, you know, we've just kind of kicked around and discussed internally. So we're thinking about holding a like a forum to, you know, let the public know some of the programs and projects that we're looking at in the near term. Kind of get the residents in the community to understand why our CIP is budgeted the way it is. Some of the projects we're looking at, why we're doing, you know, a number of these projects, you know, we've discussed. And the community's aware of, you know, the town possibly acquiring the M and T Bank location in the Kensington Business District, you know, why are we looking at that? Why would we do that? Where's the funding going to come from? Obviously, it was on the closed session agenda this evening, the serve pro property where the town's looking to acquire, you know, for a future public works facility, will give us an opportunity to discuss some of the stormwater management solutions that we're looking at on the north side of town on St. Paul between University and Farragut. As council member Bartram knows, a couple of weeks ago, there were some test pits done on Farragut for a future lateral of the storm drain from St. Paul. And then, as we just discussed right now, you know, finding some solutions to some stormwater issues on the south side of town, specifically along Washington Street in, within the sea line that goes out to Silver Creek and along along Armory Avenue and the corner of Baltimore, where we have an issue specifically with, with one resident in the yard inlet. So you know, we're looking to schedule something, maybe in, council member Lipton, I think we were talking about maybe February or March. You know, it's, it's kind of an informal forum, but it will allow the community a better understanding of what we're looking at, how we're budgeting for it, to ask questions and kind of get a better idea of, you know, what we're planning to do to keep the town moving for the next fifty, sixty years, at least on the infrastructure side. So.
I think it would be really helpful, and I did talk to Matt a little bit about this, is to have kind of a written document that we could also pass out, because, you know, I think having the forum is a great idea, but you know, everybody's busy. There's gonna, you know, not everybody's gonna be able to make a meeting. So I think if we have a written document that just, you know, whether it's bullet points or each area that we're looking at, what's going on in the town, and has it, as almost a standalone document that could be sent out, just like we send out the journal. I think that's not a better way to communicate, but I think that will get more people to, it's a little bit more work for us, but I think it's really important to send that to every household so that if they can't make a forum, or, you know, maybe it's incentive to come to a forum to get more information. But I think we're gonna, we should do that as well.
Which is your idea would be to do that leading up to a forum to help like, hey, this gives you some of that information to really like you, you know, big picture, you get an idea, but like come to the forum to get more detail.
I, I think that would be really, really helpful. I think that would push the forum probably more into March. But I think if we had a, a document that we sent out that would get people it on their radar, oh, I'm interested in this. Or, you know, I want to, I want to get more information on that. So I just think it would be really helpful, because I'm, I'm concerned that a forum, you know, especially if you had it on a Saturday or on a, you know, school night, you're going to get, you know, less than ten people.
No, I'm with you. And then budget season typically opens in March, right? So if they, I think it's a good way, Matt, to your point of here are the projects. Here's how we do the budget. As a matter of fact, we're just starting our budget. So to educate, right? Because if you're not familiar with how the CIP works, I wasn't when I first started, like you, you know, if you sit down and doing it at the same time that we're doing budget, it can be a helpful thing.
Just to piggyback off of that, I think it's a, I mean, Anne and I have talked about this a bit. We've, we've, we've bounced around the idea on this too. And she, I mean, I think beyond just informing the public about the budget, I think it's, there's also a spirit of, I don't know, call it participatory budgeting, but to give input to on, on what, you know, we have limited money, right? And we have a lot of projects. So how to prioritize and getting input in that process, I think is part of at least the spirit of it as I understand it, but I'd love to see it move that way. The more, you know, the more we can get the, the community engaged, I think the better.
Yeah, that's right, Nate. And I, I think Mayor Tracy's recommendation to have a summary written up and to share that ideally ahead of time, kind of helps with that invitation to engage. I think what, part of what's motivating this is that people may see the budget during the public hearing phase of the budget, but not understand sort of the decision making that has to go into what ultimately gets in there. And, and sort of the trade-offs that have to be made across all the different priorities, or to see how we're integrating all of the different priorities and, and getting ready for them. And so this is an opportunity to have that conversation a little more proactively, tie it to budget season as Matt has and Connor have described.
I mean, you could think it really break it up to land acquisition, stormwater management, roads and, you know, pedestrian walkways, you know, that sort of thing to make it a little bit more. You know, the bridges, you know, that sort of thing. So I don't think you have, nobody's going to have to take on a huge, because I'm, I'm hinting here that the council's going to need to have to step up to the plate a little bit to help staff out of describing, you know, what these issues are. Matt can certainly give us a long laundry list of everything we're working on. But I think, you know, Connor, you'd be good on the land acquisition and then stormwater management. Someone else could look at that. And, and then the other issues that you think you want to bring up. So I think we're gonna have to do a little homework. You know, the next few weeks and then get a date in, in March to set up the forum.
I'm, I'm thinking out loud about this, because I, I certainly want to inform people about the, the issues that we're considering. Yeah, and, and I don't know if a link on our, adding a link on our website similar to the one where we have a list of redevelopment projects would be useful. But I'm a little concerned about having a list of the projects for this forum, because the, the forum is to acclimate people to the idea of we need a robust CIP. And not, we want to discuss the merits of each particular project tonight, the one that, you know, it most upsets the person that is going to come to this forum. And I, I, I guess I draw a little bit of an analogy to the, I, I can't remember what you called it, Nate, the, the urban art concept. Where I think we want to support the concept in this, but we don't want to get lost in, I have a problem with this intersection or that intersection. And so I, I guess let's think about the purpose of this forum. Is it to just let people know how many stormwater parking issues we have that we're trying to address on their behalf? Or is it to potentially get into the weeds of, of a multiple projects that night?
Well, I think part of the reason, maybe list is the wrong word, but it is, you know, why do we need? Because these are all things that have been brought up publicly anyway. Why do we need a public works building? Why, so why are we getting these things? Why are we doing? You know, that's going to cost money. And then why are we, you know, why do we need parking? Why do we need? You know, why do we need to fix the bridges? Or, you know, I don't necessarily want to get into the weeds, but I think people who aren't going to show up to the forum need to have this information as well. So we can sit here and, you know, argue how you want to put it together, but I, I think it's important that we get that information out to everybody, not just the ten that show up for the meeting.
And we, you know, when the staff's budget does highlight the CIP projects that we anticipate over the next few years, and it kind of explains why we're allocating certain funds within certain, certain CIP programs, you know, so it's written there. It's, you know, it's public. It's a document that people can ask questions on. You know, I think this would allow us to just give a little more information. Obviously, as, as, you know, council member Lipton and I were talking about last week, you know, there's a lot of projects that we can't necessarily take to the public yet. They might be, you know, a legal issue or we're contemplating, you know, maybe acquiring a property that we haven't communicated with yet. So we talk a lot about a, a lot of different topics, a lot of items, a lot of proposals and projects, and, you know, a lot of them fall through. So we need a backup plan so we can pivot to another one that can, you know, provide solutions and, and safety and, and value to the town and community. So.
But we've certainly brought up enough, you know, publicly that I think we can provide a little bit more information on. Okay. All right, well, Anne, did you want to take the lead on setting dates and that sort of thing?
Yes, I can work with Matt on that and then engage the council in preparing.
Okay, I know we have, uh, spring break is in March, so we need to make sure that, you know, that's not, you know, we're not planning that week. And then we're going to have to, I understand from Nate that we're going to have to deal with, do something on the March meeting. So we'll have to make sure we don't do that as well. Okay. Does anybody in the audience have a question regarding B? Okay, so let's move on. Matt, did you have anything else? You good?
I, you know, I'm, I'll announce it. The town is moving forward with acquiring Surf Pro Property. So I'll just make the announcement now. In our February agenda, we're going to have it to schedule a public hearing potentially in March or as early as March, which will allow public comment. And it will be introduced through an ordinance, which would need to be approved by the council. We are looking to acquire the Surf Pro Property for a future public works facility. So look forward to seeing that on the February and March agendas.
Matt, can you describe what the Surf Pro Property is in case people don't know what it is?
Sure. So the Surf Pro Property is a commercial property, which is the property just south of St. Paul Park, and it's south of the intersection of St. Paul and Oberon. Surf Pro is a lease agent of the existing property. We have been communicating with the property's owner, Ms. Warner, for many years about acquiring this property for a future public works facility, and we've come to at least a preliminary agreement to acquire the property in which the town would most likely take possession of it, beginning October first of this coming year, of this current year. And what we're looking to do is move our public work And what we're looking to do is move our public work facility at some point, uh, kind of in a midterm, you know, three to five year period, um, in anticipation of the Summit Avenue Extended Project, which would require the town to give up our existing public works facility on Dupont Avenue. Uh, Dupont Avenue extends to the west side of Connecticut, um, for the residents that aren't familiar, and our public works facilities at the end of Dupont Avenue.
Any questions regarding? Okay.
Public questions?
Sure, go ahead, Tom.
Is that property, uh, near the existing facility?
Uh, no, it is on the north side of town. It is north of the CSX rail line, uh, but it is, it is directly south of St. Paul Park, which is our largest park in the town, which is why it was identified as a, uh, it's an ideal location for our public works, especially that we've kind of moved more towards, um, landscaping and, and, and beautification of the town. And moved away from, you know, we no longer do in-house trash collections. So our services changed slightly, so St. Paul Park is an ideal location, uh, for our, for our facility.
So that's east of Connecticut? That's it, thank you.
Okay, all right, well, let's move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Uh, council before you this evening is resolution number R dash zero one dash twenty twenty four. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, authorizing a contract agreement with AB Consultants uh, to conduct a storm drain survey to identify the location of inlets and invert elevations within the sea line storm drain network, specific to the scope of work identified within Exhibit A. Um, this is actually the second phase to, um, a contract that the council approved back in November. Um, we did the CCTV scan in two specific locations on the sea line. Um, there's no blockages, they came back clean. Um, the one pipe, which is on line C ten A, which it runs from Armory down to Coward Street is in good condition. Uh, the second location that we reviewed, uh, which runs behind, uh, the Doherty and, um, and Buckingham property on Hadley Place, uh, there are some concern issues there. We do know that we're gonna need to replace that piping. What this survey is going to do is evaluate both of those locations to determine, um, what recommendations we have for the replacements, at least of the Hadley piping. And will also get us some engineering to, and kind of figure out what we're dealing with on the rest of the sea line down to the Flap Gate. Um, this is the process to get to where we were discussing earlier this evening, where finding a solution to some flooding problems on the south side of town and potentially work with parks to find a resolution using Kensington Cabin Park. Um, so this is just the, the next piece of the puzzle for that project.
Matt, has the, um, the owner or the, the developer who's building the house on the Doherty property, have they been informed of these, um, results of this test?
Yeah, we've spoken with the developer multiple times. Um, I, I don't wanna get off topic. There's some issues with the development of that project due to the location of the property. They were not aware that it was in the county flood plain, so they're gonna need to be doing some grading issues there, uh, and they will be working with the adjacent property owner to find some resolutions. Uh, it does look like they are going to get a DPS permit, uh, they're just gonna have to, they're not gonna be able to build what they thought they were gonna build when they acquired the property.
Okay, and they're, they're talking to the property owners on each side and in behind them?
Yeah, yeah, and we'll need to, um, notify everyone, um, prior to the, the survey, cause we'll need access to the properties and then we'll provide a little more information, uh, to them, what we're doing, so.
Okay, cause we don't want to cause more problems, not just for the owner of the house, but for the people around them as well.
Yeah, there isn't, there is easements to both locations, you know, so we do, we are allowed to access um, the properties. They're on an old, um, WSSC storm drain, I'm sorry, not storm drain, uh, wastewater. It was converted over to storm drain easement. Um, but, uh, most of the residents, you know, are pretty familiar with what we're trying to do and, and have been very cooperative to us, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else have any questions?
Uh, just, uh, I should comment, uh, AB Consultants, uh, is the consultant that did the CCTV scan. Um, the last contract, uh, Brutus and Associates, our engineer hired them directly as a subcontractor. This one, the town is just hiring them directly to do the project, so if you've seen the name before, that's why they did the CCTV scans.
Matt, just a quick question, um, clarifying their hourly rates between Exhibits A and B. So it looks like we received this letter just a couple of days ago from AB Consultants where they outlined their rates um, on page two of Exhibit A. Um, for instance, the project manager at two hundred dollars an hour with a stipulation that, you know, rates are subject to a five percent escalation per year. My question though is in Exhibit B, the hourly rates that they are quoting for this project don't align to the letter. Is there, why is that?
I can check with him, uh, and confirm that. Um, I will double check.
I mean, grand scope, it's maybe a few hundred to a few thousand, you know, a thousand dollars or so, but the rate tables just don't match. And if, since, since we just got this two days ago, I don't think it should be subject to the five percent yet.
No, it won't be. Um, I'll confirm with Steve, um, and I forgot to mention one thing. On the last whereas clause within the resolution, uh, Town Attorney Ferguson has asked me to remove the last three words and Exhibit B and change that to approved by the Town Attorney. So if you could, um, if you approve this, can you please? Yeah, can you please, yeah, can you amend it to the last whereas clause to remove and Exhibit B? And just change that language to approved by the Town Attorney. Um, she has a contract on file with AB Consultants. Um, and so the Exhibit B is technically the contract, but it's not with this, so we would just defer to Sue Ellen.
Any other questions or comments, Matt? Anybody have any questions for Matt, council? Okay, any questions from the audience? Okay, I need a motion?
Sure, I'll move. Uh, I move that we adopt resolution number R dash zero one dash twenty twenty four. Uh, as amended to remove Exhibit B from the final whereas clause and replace with uh, per the, uh, town, per the Town Attorney. And subject to, uh, well, the dollar month fine.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, council, and I'll clarify with Steve the, the rate schedule.
Right, so, great, thanks, Matt.
Okay, uh, last thing on the, uh, agenda is public appearances. If anyone has anything that they would like to bring up or comment on that's not already on the agenda. Uh, Joe?
Yes, thank you. I just wondered where matters stand with the potential for ending Friday trash pickup. I know this was discussed, what, two or three months ago at a council meeting, which I didn't attend, but, uh, uh, I did hear the tape on this and, uh, um, I just haven't heard anything since then. This is something that the, the council, at least it sounded like it was under active consideration. Um, so, and, and replace it with, um, composting. Y- yeah, and it was, this was discussed two or three months ago, and, and I just wonder where things stand with this, uh, this idea. I know it hasn't reached proposal stage, or the council at least, as far as I know, hasn't approved it yet, but, uh, uh, just where, where do matters stand?
Ma- mayor, I can answer this if you'd like.
Go ahead, we just talked about it this morning.
Yeah, um, so the town is, uh, this is last year of our current, uh, contract year with Ecology Services, who are collection, is our collection agent. Um, we are looking at the possibility of adding composting. To what degree, we haven't had that conversation yet publicly or even internally. Um, but I hope to have some, um, the council, uh, council members Lipton and, and Angle, and I will be working together to bring some information to the public, uh, probably in the next couple of months, give you a better idea of what we're thinking. Um, but beyond that, we don't, really don't have any much, any more information to provide, other than we are looking at composting. Um, you know, the potential to possibly remove a second trash collection might be discussed, but there will be a public and open forum to discuss that. Um, and there's really no, no direction right now, other than we're, we're gathering information, getting preliminary numbers, and then we'll provide that information to the public and have, have a, an opportunity to, to comment.
So this would be a, um, a move that would be, what, approved by the council, or are you, are you looking for a community approval in this, or, or why? Because, you know, twice, twice a week pickup is, is, is not necessarily a luxury, it's, it's kind of a health, uh, um, uh, it's a good idea health-wise. And, uh, to have the, the composting replace that Friday pickup, uh, I'm not sure there'd be a lot of support for that. And did I not hear this correctly when I listened to the tape of that meeting? That, uh, you're looking for maybe like a forty percent buy-in on this approval from town residents? Before going ahead with that, that idea?
I believe that was the composting aspect, not of anything about the, uh, loss of a second pickup.
We've discussed a lot of possibilities right now. We're waiting for some preliminary numbers. Uh, we're trying to figure out what's, what's plausible. Um, I, I mean, at least on the admit, on the town staff's side. Um, I can't offer any more information right now, and I, and I don't wanna say anything else, because we don't have any answers for you, Joe. Um, anything that the council decides to do would be a po- public and open option, uh, to discuss this. Um, right now, staff's just putting together some information and some numbers for the council to consider, and then we'll proceed from there. So maybe, maybe really early summer, summer. I think, uh, Councilmember Lipton and Councilmember Angle will be able to provide, um, you know, something through Sustainable Kensington that you can, you know, we'll be able to provide some real answers to you, Joe, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not necessarily opposed of this idea, but I, I do think we need to have a lot of community buy-in on this. And, uh, when I listened to the tape, I, I think I heard that forty percent threshold being discussed. And I, I would think you would wanna go beyond the forty percent threshold for buying.
Hey, Joe, that, that forty percent that you heard on the tape was, um, Mayor Tracy asking Nate and I, I think at the time, because we had led the initial push for the pilot program on composting, that, you know, the, the challenge was, could we get close to forty percent of the households actively participating in the composting program? That would show a critical mass, um, are using composting. I will say as one data point, our family, our household of six, I am actually pleasantly surprised with just how much we are able to divert into composting and how much it really does reduce from our garbage pickup. And that's what's kind of led to this discussion of, that's one house, and we expand it to forty percent. Is, is forty percent kind of a, a, a place where we say, you know what, let's take it on as the whole town and find a way to do it as a town service that might promote people that are in the sixty percent who haven't yet done it to actively participate in it. So that's where the, the discussion of the forty percent was.
Hey, um, you just, I just wonder how many people are participating in, in the composting option now these days? Do you have any idea, Matt? Ten percent maybe?
So there is a program through composting crew where I believe around fifty residents are participating. Uh, again, I wanna caution this conversation, uh, we are not prepared to have this conversation, at least the town staff is not. There's a lot of information we're gathering, and I don't wanna say anything right now that, um, you know, is incorrect, or, or, you know, there will be an opportunity. Once we have the information provided to Councilmember Lipton and Angle, and there will be a public process to this, so.
Well, yeah, I understand. But you raised this two or three months ago at a, at a public meeting, and, uh, I'm just following up on that, uh, on that discussion, which I, I was unable to attend. You said fifty households, is that, is that, is that the number across town, fifty households participating now?
Nate, do you have the updated number from compost crew? It's, it's higher than fifty, it's less than a hundred, hundred households. Um, it, it ebbs and flows, right? People, residents leave, residents enter, people start, people stop. Um, we know that it's over fifty because of there are price, price bait breakpoints. So it's somewhere probably more accurately between fifteen and seventy-five. But I will also say, we haven't made another push in probably close to a year. And so, um, this was a discussion that several of us, you know, just kicked off of, you know, if we continue as a public campaign to get more participation in it, and we can try and understand how much we might be able to divert. It's, it's hard, because our vendor for both garbage and compost crew do multiple jurisdictions, part of the unincorporated part of the county, as well as other municipalities. So there's, there's no way for us to get like, pun intended, like clean tonnage numbers for just the town of Kensington. But we just wanna start a discussion of, how much is being diverted? And is it enough that it may be worth examining dropping a second pickup? So again, this is the beginning of a, of just a discussion.
So fifty to seventy-five households would be what percentage of the town, of households in town? Roughly.
Around ten percent.
Okay.
So, look, can I, I'll just say, I, I mean, we're, we're gonna have many discussions about this. I, I, and we're all gonna have different views of, of the value of composting and, and the second pickup. And, and Noah, as somebody who's been in town for twenty-five, twenty-six years now, you know, I think when you have younger kids, you appreciate getting rid of the trash more frequently. And now that I'm older, I, I don't feel the need to feed the trash truck every pickup, but it's nice if I miss some Tuesday to have a Friday coming around. Um, I just dump my compost to my backyard. I don't know about you guys.
Okay, I, it was, it was just a, um, uh, an agenda item a couple of months ago, and I just wanted to know where we stand with this. And, uh, I, I appreciate the numbers that have been attached to the, uh, to the discussion. I think that's, that's important, and I think further numbers would be, uh, um, useful as well. I think, you know, just, just letting people know that that second trash pickup could be down the road jeopardized. I'm not sure that everybody would be in favor of that, but, um, not having that second pickup also would take off the streets, you know, a pretty big, uh, trash truck. And, uh, that's, that's, there, there's some advantage to that too, I would say, so.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Are there any other comments that people wanna bring up?
Just a quick thank you in less than thirty seconds and a comment on the Summit Avenue Extension. It's Tom Brohl, I don't know how to raise my hand in the chat, so excuse me. Um, I wanna promote the idea of reducing the cost burden on the county through a public-private partnership directly with the town of Kensington. Um, a Montgomery County resident, um, uh, has a patent on a laser technology to change the lane size, um, at any given moment to, uh, accept more traffic in any different direction. It's quite brilliant. It was proposed on a two-seventy project at one point. I think they need a pilot program. I think Summit Avenue Extension could be great. Um, it's not integrated with solar technologies yet. Um, it can be integrated with solar technologies, similar to some of the solar that's done on, um, the inter-county connector. And I hope the county, um, listens to you all, and will do anything we can to support you. Uh, not for our properties or anything in Kensington. It is the most important public investment in the down county, and it should be done. And we wish you well in leadership environmentally and, um, technology.
Thank you. Appreciate the information. Thank you, Tom. Okay. Excuse me, I don't see any other hands. Um, one thing I neglected to, uh, mention earlier, I just wanna thank, uh, Matt and the crew for getting out the, getting our new benches installed on Howard Avenue. They look terrific. We have another order coming, so the- We have another order coming, so the, once they come, the public works will put them together and get them out on the, on the street. They, they look, they look really good, Matt. Thank you. Um, I believe we will be taking the old benches and giving opportunities for residents. To um, get them for a small donation that will be um. Given to a nonprofit, which is, remember, we talked about Jubilee, but we, you know, haven't said on anything, but. Think it'd be a good way of giving back to the community. And then, of course, publicly, they are very heavy, so we would have public works drop it off. To someone's front yard, where they're not gonna be taking it around back up the hill, but they can drop it off at your front yard. So we'll, we'll ever, everybody know once we have all the benches collected. Okay. We uh need to talk about the February meeting. Uh, Darren, you said you'd be out of town. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um. So, I guess we could. Make it a week later or a week earlier? Don't know how that works for everybody. Or go back to our Monday, the dreaded Monday.
Just a request from the staff not to move it up, um, because it's gonna take us some time to put together the, the agenda packet for next month, especially if we. Do the introduction for an ordinance for the Surf Pro property, so.
Do you think the twenty-first? Is everybody available on the twenty-first?
Twenty-first is a Thursday?
It's a Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, February. Sorry, wrong one.
I'm assuming no one speaking means that's.
Twenty-first.
Well, there is an RJC meeting.
RJC meeting, but we can move that.
Yeah.
And I should be available. There's a chance, oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I, I don't think we could, would wanna do it earlier, cause I think there's President's Day weekend. Yeah, the nineteenth is President's Day.
So I can, I can, and, and I don't know, when Matt said move it up, I don't know if he meant by a day. Or a week, but um, and, and Nate, I don't know what your plans are that week, but I, I can, I could either do it the day before the fourteenth, or I could do it the next week.
Yeah, there's a slight chance I might be traveling overseas for work that following week, but it's uh, it's like fifty-fifty now, so. I would say don't plan this one around me. The, the March conflict is more certain.
Um, well, I mean, we could do uh the thirteenth or the fifteenth.
Not, not fifteenth.
Not the fifteenth.
The thirteenth or twenty-first.
Thirteenth works. Is that two, is that okay? Matt, to move it up that one day?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I just didn't wanna move it up a week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's, it's gonna be a quick turnaround for us. Um.
As.
Yeah, there's, there might, the, the February agenda might be, might be.
January does have thirty-one days, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go with February thirteenth. Work for everybody?
Yep.
Alright, so mark your calendars, February thirteenth. It will be by Zoom. We're definitely doing uh the winter months by Zoom. Okay, um, do we want to go ahead and tackle the March? Issue, which is the thirteenth?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I will be gone exactly at that time of our council meeting on a flight.
Okay.
So, um, but I'll be back on the fourteenth or fifteenth, so I could probably do any other time that week or the following week. Like the Monday, Tuesday that week or the following week?
Well, we could do the, keep it on Wednesday and do March twentieth.
It works for me. It's another RJC.
RJC.
Yeah.
Um. So they, cause they um. Spring break is the following week.
Yeah, it starts on the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Thinking ahead, if, if we're mov- moving forward, and, and maybe I, maybe I'm. Here, we don't need to worry about the thirty-day periods, but I would, I would hate to. Move the March meeting a week later to the twentieth, and then find that we don't have enough time between the March and April meetings to do something. That requires a thirty-day period notice.
Okay, did you say the twelfth was okay?
No, we'd be okay. So if we introduce an ordinance, if we, if we introduce an ordinance on February thirteenth. We need thirty days from February thirteenth to hold the public hearing. To acquire the property. So the, the, what was that? I think March twentieth, Wednesday, March twentieth or right around there would be.
Do the twelfth. It sounds like the twelfth, the day before would work as well.
But I don't think that's, that's thirty days, actually.
Oh, I see, from that time period. Okay.
So shifting it a week would actually help, is what Matt's saying, right? To give, to account for those thirty days.
To go to the twentieth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I, I'm sorry, just to belabor, um, we announce a public hearing in February. We hold the public hearing in March. And then. We, we keep the record open until the next meeting traditionally, right? So that's April. And is there any requirement that the? Period of time between the March twentieth meeting and the April tenth? Normal town meeting be a certain number of days?
Uh, twenty-eight days for a public hearing, I believe.
What?
Well, that's the public hearing. This is for the record to be left open.
Yeah, so, no, there's no requirement to keep the record open. You can adopt it after you hold the public hearing, just historically.
Said it for the Fri- it was the Friday before the public.
Yeah, we, we've always historically kept open public hearings for an additional month to allow comment. Um, where our thirty-day clause comes in is not the announcement of the public hearing, which is in our code, and then. And then we're required twenty-eight days between the announcement and the actual hearing. So we're dealing with two, two requirements.
Alright, but moving into March twentieth doesn't mess us up in April. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, very good. Alright, um, I think we got everything. Uh, all I need is a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Alright, good night.